And may I do hereby declare this meeting in the Conshawken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it.
Please rise.
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds, our wills, with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Flanagan.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. The only announcement I have is that for council and myself is that we do have a very large agenda tonight, so for myself and all of us, I would hope that we can all try to stay on subject and not sway off so we can get through our agenda. Thank you. So the first order of business is a public hearing on 200, the 200 block of Washington Street, Millennium Block A, Millennium Block Four, conditional use application. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam President, to help you along in getting through this meeting. This matter is being continued this evening. If you could go on the record, please. This is the scheduled date and time for the conditional use hearing for the application of Millennium Waterfront Associates LP for the property located on the 200 block of Washington Street, known as Millennium Block A. The property is owned SP2 zoning district, and the applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to section 27-1503 of the Conshawken zoning ordinance as amended to construct a 617,000 square foot office building with a height of up to 230 feet. You're all very familiar with the application. It was last before you on June 20th, 2018, at which time it was continued to tonight. There has been a request received from the applicant and the other parties to the case to further continue the matter to October 17th, 2018. That is again a Wednesday. It will be held at 7:00 PM here in Borough Hall in Council Chambers, 400 Fayette Street, Conshawken Borough. I have indicated to the applicant and to all council involved that given the age of this application, it's now over a year old, that this will be the last continuance that council is inclined to grant. So at your next meeting, well, at your meeting in October, you can expect either a presentation or a withdrawal. And with that, I simply need a motion to continue to the date previously mentioned, October 17th, 2018, here in Council Chambers at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And with that, we thank our court reporter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consider approving a 5K turkey trot with Kathleen Baldwin, the applicant.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Baldwin, and as you mentioned, I'm proposing the kidney 5K turkey trot to take place on Saturday, November 17th, with a rain date of Sunday. I moved to Conshawken in 2012, and shortly thereafter, I became an avid runner. It's so easy to just walk out front my, uh, my front door and, and hit Fayette Street. I feel really safe and comfortable. I also go down to the trails. And then within the year, I also became a dialysis nurse. What is dialysis? It's a life-sustaining modality for people with end-stage renal disease. So over the next three and a half years of both running and even completing a marathon, I also completed the ultimate marathon in schooling, and I graduated with my masters from La Salle as a nurse practitioner. I joined a local nephrology practice, local to the Philadelphia area here, and, you know, within a few short months of working a lot of hours, my friends and family were asking, well, what is nephrology and what do you do? And I soon learned to realize that many of the common population really have no idea what nephrology or renal disease is. So I came up with this idea to combine my passion for running and also my passion for my career and to give back to my patients. So I reached out to the National Kidney Foundation. Their headquarters are actually based here in Philadelphia, which is great because I'm able to do a lot of volunteer projects with them also. So I pitched them this idea, and they were all about it. They thought it was a great idea. They are involved in a lot of kidney walks, as lo, um, along with like other educational activities for the community. The, uh, the kidney 5K would take place through the Team Kidney platform on the kidney.org website. So it's an easy place for applicants to register. All of the proceeds would go to the National Kidney Foundation, and the kidney.org website where the Team Kidney platform would be is also a great place where they can make it, people can make additional donations and learn more about kidney disease. I believe you have the course route, which has been finalized and approved by the Police Association, and the event would start and finish in Sutcliffe Park, and I'm requesting the total time to take place from 7:00 AM to noon to allow for setup and breakdown.
So you have any questions?
No.
Kathleen, do you have any education that's going to be done at this race?
Yeah, so, um, the liaison that I'm working with, with the National Kidney, Kidney Foundation, Andrea, she couldn't make it here tonight, she's stuck in traffic, but they will be setting up a tent, um, and, which would be like just placed on the basketball courts, and they can do educational handouts, wristbands, pens, that sort of thing.
Any blood pressure screening or any of the screening pieces?
We don't have that in mind for this event in particular, but they are able to suggest and advertise other times of the year that they do those events.
Okay. All right, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Uh, so in that note, I would need if council is inclined, a motion to approve the 5K turkey trot, conditioned upon meeting all of the administrative requirements.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is consider approving a suicide prevention panel discussion. Sarah McLynchee, if you'll come up, please. Thank you.
Good evening, members of Borough Council. Good evening, Chief Metz. Good evening, Mike Peters, and good evening, Mayor Aronson, as well as Brittany Rogers. I thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak to you today. I have put together an event that is, um, of a topic that's very near and dear to me. In 2009, I lost my brother to suicide, and I myself am a depression survivor, and my family has been affected by mental health for decades, and it was, it was really a tough loss, but my biggest wish would be to help at least one person who is also suffering from depression and maybe having thoughts of suicide. So I came up with this idea with the support and help of the Montgomery County Suicide Task Force to put together a panel discussion that brings together seven members of the community, it's actually eight with a moderator, who have been affected by suicide in some capacity and would like to speak about their experience as well as share available resources for those who may have been impacted by suicide or who are at risk for being impacted by suicide. And also, it, it really brings home mental health in general, and the, my hope is that it, it'll foster a discussion that helps to break the stigma that often surrounds mental health, that makes it difficult for those who suffer from mental illness to seek help. So I'd like to use this event to create that kind of environment in our community, because as suicide is a national epidemic, it's also a local epidemic, and we, many of our community members have been affected by suicide or know someone who has. So I do want to ask for council's support of the event, to formally invite council to the event, as well as Mayor Aronson and Chief Metz. And I also wanted to let you know that the volunteers or the panelists are all volunteer, as we additionally have five community organizations who will be providing resources for attendees. So just to take a step back, the event is taking place on Tuesday, September 11th, as you can see. I don't think, I think I moved the flyer.
Yes, you did.
Did I?
There you go. That's good.
Oh, okay. So the event is taking place on Tuesday, September 11th. It's actually 6:30 to 8:30 PM. So after talking with the Director of Parks and Recreation, Lauren Irosari, we decided to move the event to that timeframe, so just same amount of time, just a little bit later to give us time to set up. And it is at the multi, in the multipurpose room at the community center at the Fellowship House, and we do expect for 50 to 100 attendees. And we also, we expect it to be adults, and then if children attend, we're just letting them know in promotional materials that there may be some sensitive nature, and they should bring a parent or guardian with them. It's completely free for the public, and because it's voluntary and, you know, people are giving their time, I wanted to ask for council's official support in waiving the fee to use the multipurpose room for the event.
Okay. Does anyone in council have any questions for Sarah?
Sarah, where are you advertising this?
So we are advertising, the Borough has graciously allowed, or agreed, Kate has, Kate Cosman has agreed to share a post on social media, on the Borough's social media pages, but the direct source will be on social media, my own personal page, and then the page of the folks who are part of the Montgomery County Suicide Task Force. And then a primary way we're advertising though is with this flyer here. So what we're going to do is, the task force and I are going to go around the town on Saturday, the Borough, and ask if businesses would be comfortable sharing the flyer. Additionally, we'll have the flyer at the community center at the Fellowship House and then outside of the Borough administration offices.
There's no RSVP? It's open?
It's open, yeah. So if someone decides last minute, Lauren has actually let me know we can accommodate, I believe, up to 250 people in the, in the multipurpose room. So we could hold a lot of folks if, if we get the interest, so.
Okay.
Um, I'd also like to thank Chief Metz for his help in securing a panelist, who I'm really excited to have join us.
Okay. Anyone else? Any more questions? Okay, and that, I would need someone from council to make a motion to waive the fee for the use of the community center, conditioned upon meeting all of the administrative requirements.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks so much for your support.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is Fall and Winter Recreation Services Activity Guide Update with Lauren Irosari, Director of Recreation Services.
Good evening, everyone. Just quickly, I wanted to let council know, let our residents know, that our activity guide for the fall-winter season has been finished today, will be released tomorrow. I believe that Kate left some copies for you all. I'm not sure if you had a chance to take a look through it. We have a lot of new things going on at not just the community center, but with the Recreation Services Department for the Borough. Once you take a look through, you'll see that we have some events that we have had in the past, such as the senior luncheons. We will continue to have our winter wonderland, our pumpkin painting, but some new events have been scheduled, such as a wellness workshop for working professionals. Just, you know, some topics will include nutrition for wellness, holistic self-care, habits for a healthy work-life balance. I have been working with Revive Wellness on this event, and I think it'll be something great for the community with all of the working professionals we do have along with our residents as well. We have in October, a Medicare seminar. We have also the American Red Cross coming to do a blood drive Sunday, September 23rd, so anyone that is able to donate blood, please do so, they're in, in need. Going on to some senior programs that we will have, Bingo, as usual. Bingo has a really great following for our seniors every Monday. I mean, it's, it's a great thing to see. I love seeing them come in and, and do what they do. We're actually having open senior card games on Fridays for anyone that wants to come in. It'll be open games. We'll have some tables, cards set up, possibly light refreshments for them. We also have a senior fitness class that's included with community center membership, and that will continue. We also have a couple other adult classes that are included with a membership as well. You can take a look in there and see, along with our residents, will be able to see that as well. Some other adult programs that we have this year, we are taking over the fitness programs. So we have boot camp that will start at 5:45 in the morning. We have Zumba during the day, which is a low-impact Zumba, and then we have a Zumba that will be taking place at night for those that want more of that high-energy Zumba. We have a Pilates class that's taking place. Also, another, it's high-intensity interval training. So we have a lot of new things along, you know, the, along those fitness programs that will be taking place. Also, a yoga class, we've been offering free yogas in the park. Our last session will be August 22nd, and that'll lead into our fall session with Mary Elise, the instructor. She's done a great job. We are also promoting personal training through Blazin Body Fitness, and then meal plans. I've als, I have had some personal training with this gentleman, and he does a great job, so I'm confident that if people are interested, members or non-members, because there's different pricing, that he will do a great job with them. Which brings us to our youth programs. We have mad science workshops that will be taking place. We have kids yoga. We have a drama club that will be held on Thursday evenings. We are working with, sorry, we are working with Destoffo's Premier Martial Arts for self-defense work, for self-defense workshops for not only children, but for adults too. They'll be held once a month by Destoffo's. We also will have a beginner's ballet, which I'm happy to say that we've already had some registrations for that class.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be, you know, a big hit for the, the younger kids. We have a sewing club that we will try and, and get running. We also have soccer shots, which has been such a success, successful program for the Recreation Services Department, so that will continue. You can take a look through and see some of our other programs that we will be offering this fall and winter. It will pretty much go through until February and when, until our next spring/summer activity guide. One other thing that I wanted to point out, we will have a Tiny Tots Open Play. We have some new equipment that we will have set up Wednesdays and Fridays. It will be free for members of the community center and $5 for non-members. It, for ages three to five-year-olds, toddlers, for their pa, you know, their parents and them to come in and enjoy what we have to offer. That being said, I'm very excited about all of this stuff taking place. It's there, the registration is open, so we just need our residents to participate.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Sounds great.
No, it's very exciting. We're happy to have you aboard and, and working so hard to get the community center up and running. We do really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We, um, we have seen an increase in foot traffic in the community center, so hopefully it continues with the new programs and events that we're bringing in.
Yes, that's great.
Lauren, I just have a quick question. So part of the comp plan, as we move forward, one of the action items is to further develop the capacity to serve the K through 12 students. In our recreation guide, is that addressing the, the programming for that age range in this round, or is that something we're still working towards?
Um, I think that it does address it. We have programs for all ages. What I didn't mention, um, I didn't want to go through every program, but we also have a babysitting certification class for 11- and 15-year-olds. The self-defense adult class is actually starting at 14. They can accommodate, you know, with adults as well. So, and then the youth would be seven to 13. All of our youth programs are within that age range, along with the beginner's ballet, which I think mentioned, which is three to five-year-olds.
Great.
Our basketball goes from seven to 12, so.
Perfect.
I think that it does. But as the years go, we're, I will see what programs are working and what is not, and develop accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is capital improvement financing options from Concord Public Finance Advisors. Mr. Chris Gibbons, you'll come forward, please. Just for council's information also, Mr. Gibbons is going to give us options that we can use during our budget time in the fall. Administration will go through all of what he is suggesting, suggesting at the time of budget, we will have more detail on everything that he's showing us. So tonight would not be a night of a lot of detailed questions, just more information.
Thank you for your time this evening. I know that you said we had a very full agenda, and I think that what we're going to discuss tonight will probably make your head split as well, so I apologize in advance, but I think that was the reason for me coming tonight, was just to throw out as many ideas as possible. So a lot of ideas here. As I understand it, the Borough is looking at a capital improvements program of approximately 20, $20 million. The question is, you know, when and how to fund it. So I think kind of, and my comments will be kind of at the 30,000-foot level, so please ask for additional information if you, you want to go into those various alternatives we have here. But essentially, the first question I would ask if I were you is, well, what is our legal borrowing capacity? The Borough has legal capacity to borrow an additional 22 million. That's on top of the 9.8 million dollars that's still outstanding for this facility in what is called non-electoral debt. It's a legal definition that essentially means general obligation debt. You have an additional 35.5 million dollars above the 9.8 million dollars remaining for non-electoral and lease rental debt. That's essentially debt that's general obligation debt and a debt that you might guarantee. So for all intents and purposes, we're really talking about 22 million dollars, what your legal ability is for just borrowing under state law, using standard parameters of borrowing. The reason I'm caveat-ing that a little bit, because I will show you that there might be other ways that you could actually borrow additional funds if you want. So I listed 10 or so alternative financing mechanisms here, and again, we'll delve into them as deeply as you want to, but the first one is, is what is known as the municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4. I think you might have heard of MS4 before. There are communities across the Commonwealth that are essentially doing what I'm going to describe, describe already, and essentially the idea is the Borough could undertake a study to determine the amount of impervious area in the Borough. The idea of impervious area, streets, roofs, sidewalks, anything that rain can't go through, and then assess a fee to landowners based on these calculations. The Borough could then, either then, either borrow and use these fees collected to pay debt service or allow the fees to build up over time to complete projects. I know that there are, at, at this point, probably eight, nine, 10 stormwater MS4 systems in, in place in the, in the Commonwealth. I know there are a host of others that are underway. I'm actually on a committee myself for York County that's looking at a, a stormwater system for the entire county. Of course, the issue's there a little different, is kind of more of how do you prevent farm water runoff versus, you know, rainwater runoff here, but it's the same idea. If you have these stormwater projects, and I understand that the Borough does have these stormwater projects, what's the most equitable way to, to pay for these? And many communities are selecting this option, that essentially, oh, we'll, we'll create a separate fee and charge based on the impervious area that you have within the, the property that you own. That's really the kind of the, the whole idea of that. I mean, there's a bunch of levels to that, and I would say that if you're interested in doing that, that would take a while, because you have to hire an engineering firm to undertake that impervious area study. I know there are various GIS systems in place, but it's kind of very granular, you have to get down to, you know, square feet throughout the Borough, so that is the first idea. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you.
The next one is parking. The Borough could establish more meter-based, meter-based on-street parking spaces, which produce additional income. I know that's always a, a quandary as to whether or not you want to encourage, discourage, and does that encourage and discourage parking in your Borough, but it's an idea of revenue enhancement you could consider. Obviously, if you're going to consider that route, you probably would want to follow through a more robust, robust enforcement program, ensure that revenue base is continued. So that MS4 fees, parking fees. The next is, are there any programs that you're considering that you can, that you could actually partner with the county? Either actually have, have the county undertake the projects? Or the second idea within that, that third bullet point is to see if the county would afford the Borough its proportionate share of the county use fee for use on roads and bridges. That's essentially the $5 fee that goes part of registration, you know, that I know there was discussion as to whether or not the county or other counties that have that fee in place would redistribute that back to the municipalities within their county. The next one you see quite often in communities that have larger colleges, universities, and other institutions, hospitals, that kind of thing, but establish a payment in lieu of taxes program, essentially the idea that because they are non-taxable entities, try to encourage them, work with them to effectively pay their proportionate share of the revenue that could be collected by the Borough that they otherwise wouldn't collect if you didn't have the assessed valuation taxation revenue from that, that portion. I also think it's important to go back to that MS4 fee for a second. Because you're going to, if you decide to go down that route, you're going to look at every property, so it does give the, the Borough an opportunity to ask and have the, the non-taxable entities participate in the cost of these projects, because it's not taxes.
Okay.
Voter referendum. I've seen this done in a couple communities in the, in the Commonwealth. Essentially, the idea is some of the, the projects under consideration would have broad public appeal. The Borough could allow the voters to decide whether to move ahead with certain capital projects. I know there's specific code, there's specific code within the state statutes that you have to follow in order to undertake a referendum, and you'd have to have your solicitor work with you folks on that if you're interested in such a, a matter, but it does allow you to increase your legal borrowing capacity, because if you have projects that is approved under referendum, that doesn't count against your legal borrowing capacity. So the $22 million I said before, if you have a referendum for, say, $10 million, that doesn't count against the 22, so it's, it's another alternative means to funding the projects that you're considering undertaking. The other idea is to, essentially raise the tax rate and dedicate the new revenue stream to capital improvements projects only. I have also seen this up in the Poconos, where in this case, they were interested in building a new library, and they asked the electorate whether or not they would consider some type of increase in their, their income tax to pay for this, this library, and they actually went for it. So there are various funding mechanisms that are out there that you can actually have the voters help you with, rather than try to convince the voters that you think that's the, the correct program to undertake. The next one, undertake curbside improvements and using assessments. I, I think that does require further legal review. We talked about this within our, our working group, that there's some circumstances that under Borough Code, you actually already you actually already required as a resident to undertake certain, and pay for certain improvements on your streets and, excuse me, on your sidewalks and curbs. So, if you were interested in that alternative, that would need additional review. The next one is kind of a, a little bit of a mind bender, if you will, it's called a tax increment financing district. In this case, any alternative, excuse me, any increase in assessed value, and ultimately, the increase in tax revenue after a date certain, would be used to pay project costs or debt service in a defined geographic area of the borough. I understand the project that was deferred to another hearing date would be such a project that I'm talking about. You know that you're going to get incremental revenue from that. You would make that a tax increment financing district if you had other improvements that you were going to do in the area. And so that the increased revenue that the borough would receive from that project could be used and directly dedicated to repayment of the debt, or actually fund the projects without borrowing in that specific area. But there's, the other side of that is, quite frankly, you could do that on your own anyway, without any kind of tax increment financing district. If you knew from one year to the next that you were going to have a good bump of assessments, and ultimately, tax revenue is really, without any additional services required, you could take that extra revenues that you will receive and put them in some type of capital improvement fund, so that you have essentially a down payment for projects that you're considering. It also is important to note that tax increment financing district idea also requires participation from both the county and the Colonial School District, as well as the borough. So, there's a lot of steps to that. That is primarily used as an economic development tool, we've been involved with several of those across the Commonwealth, and it has been a very successful tool, more of a redevelopment than it is kind of a way to just access additional funds for capital projects. Again, the way to avoid that legal step that you have to take is just put the money aside that you're going to realize from the additional revenue from the new buildings. I've seen this once, up in the Poconos, it is nine months old, so it's another question for your solicitor, where a municipality is actually establishing a local hotel tax, and it's essentially within a confined geographic area, again, that they know that there's a huge hotel about to go up, and they're going to provide services to that area, so that it's the same idea as tax increment financing district. Any revenues realized through hotel tax in that case will be used for the services that the borough would provide, in that case, it was a township. I say it's a legal review, it is the first time I've seen this, so I don't know, quite frankly, you know, if it will stand the test of legal time. So, it's kind of remains to be seen whether or not that's a solid option. And then the ultimate, the last idea I had here was aggressively pursue grant opportunities. I know that grants are something that everybody pursues, it's just a matter of whether or not you would like to have additional focus placed on that. You know, there's always grants you hear about. I was at the municipality of Norristown a couple of months ago, and they were talking about pursuing various foundations that are within the whole Philadelphia, metropolitan Philadelphia area, that are designed just for helping neighborhood improvement projects and that kind of thing. But it would have to be obviously more specified than kind of a normal capital improvements list. But it's out there, so it's important to note. There's my 10.
Gave us something to think about.
Mm-hmm, questions anyway?
I have a question. How did you arrive at that 22 million, that we can borrow $22 million?
There's a mathematical calculation that the state code requires, and we did use that mathematical calculation to do the borrowing for this. Essentially, it's the idea that the revenue base of the borough, you take a three-year's average revenue base, in this case, is about $13 million, and then you take two times, 2.5 times that revenue base figure, that gives the ultimate amount that you can borrow. In that case, the 13 million times 2.5 gets you about $32.5 million. So you subtract the borough hall debt off that, that's what you have left over, and that's how you arrive at the 22 million.
Thank you.
No more questions, thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gave us a lot to think about.
That was helpful.
Yes.
To look at other options.
We have two items on our consent agenda for the evening. The first is to approve and adopt the July 18 meeting minutes. The second is approve the July ending treasures report and accounts payable. For this, I'll need a motion to approve the July 18th meeting minutes and the July ending treasures report and accounts payable in the amount of $600,788.31.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under unfinished business, the first item is consider adopting the Montgomery County 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan update per Resolution 2018-17. This is actually a housekeeping item. The county updated their plan in 2017, municipalities are asked to adopt, would need a motion to adopt the Monaco 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is consider improving plans for the PSAB Exploring PA video. We did have a discussion on this and did previously make a motion. We don't need a motion this evening, but we need to answer questions that, from Brittany, that need to finalize with the details for the PSAB. Let's see, I have those, everyone has those. Do you have that, Brittany? Ah, right here, sorry. Okay, so some of the things that we have discussed and have gotten feedback on, or which things council, different particular council people and the mayor would like to discuss. Anita would like to discuss Borough Hall. I have down the Fellowship and Community Center. Ms. Flanagan has Marywood Park House. Ms. Tino has Borough Parks. Mayor Aronson has the Schuylkill River Trail. So our goal for this meeting is to finalize speakers and topics, recommend that we, we recommend that we choose locations for the borough to highlight. We need to schedule a filming date, there are four dates available, Wednesday, September 5th, Thursday, September 6th, Thursday, September 20th, and Friday, September 21st. We need to finalize this hopefully by August 15th, which is today, correct? So we need discussion.
So during those dates, what timeframe?
So we could further determine what timeframes for each section, in case some of us have to do work things?
Yes.
I'm going to suggest I would take either Thursday, but if that's not convenient for anyone else.
Either one's fine for me.
Karen, can you make Thursday's work?
Thursday, September 6th, yes.
Okay, so we go with Thursday, September 6th?
Okay.
Okay.
Brittany, is there anything else you need us to finalize, or we just need to work on what, all the details?
Will we get a list of how long each portion should be, and that type of thing, they'll send us the specifics?
From like a half hour to an hour on each topic?
How long is this video going to be?
And are we, are we writing our own scripts about the areas that we've picked?
No, they prefer that you do it as naturally as possible. So, the area that you would be speaking about, this will give you time to put your thoughts together, so that when you do go to speak regarding whatever area it is that you have, that you can just do it as naturally as possible. They prefer not to use a script.
Okay, one suggestion that I do have, Mr. Stokely, you don't, you don't want to be videoed?
What's that?
You don't want to be videoed?
Yeah, I just didn't get my enough time to get it in.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anybody have to develop?
No. We also need to do the business district and the entertainment area, that would be great also. Maybe we'll have to decide where we would like to start, do we want to start videoing here, do we want to start down there, work our way up? Think, all things we need to decide. Aronson, did you have something to add, you look like you had something to add?
I was just going to say, it's helpful if you just bring bullet points with you, kind of like if you're making a presentation, and then it sounds natural.
Everyone settled on that, but you're good? Okay.
And you'll get in touch with Leslie?
Yes, that's the next step.
The next item on the agenda is consider, oh, no, we're past that one, hold on one thing. Consider approving the 2019 International Bike Race. We have any discussion on that?
So, I'll start. I think it's an intriguing idea for the community. I don't think we're ready to take on such a big endeavor for this year, but I would like to continue to research it for future, and maybe look at it from not, the perspective of not shutting down the whole community for a whole weekend, but figuring out how we could at least incorporate it into the community, so the community can still function, based on some feedback from some people who are here and listened to the presentation, and some people that I talked to. I don't want to shut it down completely, but I think that it needs further research with administration and with the county and different things. That's my thought process.
Mine is that they talk to the chief, or the fire, what you call it, to get their input on it, and come back with us?
We did that.
We don't have nothing about it, so I'm out for it.
So what was their date anyway, to start this? What was the date that they wanted to have this?
September 1st, is that right?
It's kind of close, isn't it?
Oh, not September, sorry, June 1st.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah, June 1st.
Yes, June 1st, and the feedback from the police department and administration at this point is that there is not enough time for all of, everything to be planned for this year. And I think that was Tina's point, not necessarily to say, no, we'll never do it, but in the future, not necessarily this year, because we really don't have the time or the resources, am I correct?
You need a heck of a lot of resources for this type of event, because of the crowds that it brings with it.
Well, I know just from the law enforcement and from Chief Metz, all the requirements now that Homeland Security requires in itself will take a good amount of time, so.
Do we need a motion at this point?
Yes. So we would need a motion from council, either to deny or approve. So the motion would be, if council is inclined to, a motion to deny request to host the International Bike Race in the borough of Contra Hocken.
Okay, I would make that motion.
I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Stettler, if you can come to the podium?
There are three different zoning applications, which currently are in place for hearings on August 30th, which is a Thursday. We've had quite a few this month, so we are asking you to review the three that are scheduled for the 30th today. You've already looked at the ones that are scheduled for Monday, the 20th. The first one is 6 East First Avenue, and that is in the Business Commercial District. It is a resolution of a sign issue. The property at 6 East First Avenue is a unique property, and in that it is one property, one parcel, that has two addresses, 4 and 6, which limits the amount of signage that can be on the building. When Snap Pizza took over the Old Juice Bar there, they did a lovely front glass window and put a sign in it, and then they put up a projecting sign. One, only one sign is permitted, and we've been working with the owner for the past year to try and resolve the issue. He's finally decided to ask for a variance for the signage, and that is to allow for two signs at the building, and for the signage to be more than, than would be permitted on that building. Signage on that building has to be, all of the uses, no more than 35 square feet, even though it's two addresses, because it's one parcel. Mr. Howie is here today from Snap Pizza, if you have any questions for him? Okay.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Next item?
You can either support that one, or not take a position, or not support it. The second one is a similar issue, it is for 128 Fayette Street, which is Tierra Caliente. And the restaurant had an awning for a few years while it was in existence. The awning was changed and the name of the restaurant was added to the awning, which constitutes a second sign. That sign, that restaurant has a large sign, circular sign, that's perpendicular to Fayette Street on the second floor. It's been a non-conforming sign for many, many years. Uses after it was put up, continue to use the same sign and just change the facing on it, which is permitted when you have a non-conforming sign. Again, we have been working with the owner of the property to try and resolve this, so that the two signs are there. You turn the, turn the awning around, get another awning, or go for a variance. It's decided to go for a variance. Ms. Vargas is here, along with her attorney, Mr. Butera. If you have any questions, this is a rather small issue, but it would resolve a potential problem in the Business Commercial District.
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I drove around today and looked at several of the other restaurants, and there are a couple that have double signage, were they grandfathered in?
Some of them were, some of them got variances, some of them are unique, and they face two different places. We've been trying to be there, work cooperatively with these places if there is a violation. So, some of them were, and some of them got variances, Anita, that's all I can tell you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's go to, let's go to the next one, and we'll handle them all one, one time, Chris.
That works for me. The third hearing is a little bit different, this is for 103 Spring Mill Avenue. This is Ted's Place. This is located, oddly enough, this is located in the Borough Residential 2 zoning district. And it has been a legal non-conforming use for many, 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 many years, I don't even know when it started. So, it has been there, it has been a mixed-use commercial building with a commercial use on the first floor, and it's a house. There's also been a residential use in it. The property has been sold to the owner of El Limón, who proposes to move the El Limón business from where it is at the corner of Fayette and first, East First Avenue, to the El Limón site. As long, with the non-conforming use, as long as it remains the same use, in the same area, it can continue on as it is. In this case, the owner wants to extend the restaurant use into what was a portion of the residential use. She's also requesting addition, requesting a change in the signage. With non-conforming uses, if the sign is reused, just the wording on the sign changed, if it's the same size, same location, it can stay where it is. The signage in this case is probably going to be a little less, but it's not going to be the same type of signage, it's not going to be in the same type of location, which would require a variance. By expanding, the property has had limited off-street parking since it, since its inception, and by expanding the use, the amount of parking that would be required in that expanded area would be required, so a variance is being requested for that. Ms. Vargas is here, along with Mr. Butera, her attorney, if you have any questions on that particular application. Yeah, I do. Are you going up?
No.
Because you can't go out, so you're going back into the back building?
Yes.
Okay. There's no change in the footprint of the building in this one. Okay.
How many eat-in tables are you looking at?
Right now, we have like around nine eat-in tables in what Ted's Pizza was before, and we're trying to add at least five or six more eat-in tables. The area I'm trying to expand is not huge, it's a 20 by 20.
And how many, do you have any existing El Limón?
Existing El Limón, we have around 14 tables, 14, 15 tables.
So, you're looking at an equivalent?
Correct.
Space?
Correct.
And then your, your ideas that you would close El Limon? And the reason I'm asking is it's all going to be the parking, you're all going to compete for all of your restaurants in the area. So, if you're closing El Limon, I would feel more inclined to say then that makes up, it's the same type of parking. If you're saying you're keeping them all open, then I'm, oh.
No, no, we're closing El Limon.
This is not El Limon 2.
They could probably use one, though.
And what are your hours of operation going to be?
The same hours.
Which are?
Uh, Monday through Thursday is 10:30 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
And Friday and Saturday, we open until 3:00 in the morning. And Sunday, we open until 10:00 p.m.
Have you spoken to your potential new neighbors around the, the building? Have you gotten feedback from them about the?
I haven't spoken to just my neighbor, just one neighbor that I guess is next door to where Ted's was, and he was concerned about the hours.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, so what I think I'm going to do at this point, Chris, if you don't mind, is I'm going to get, go back through A through D, one at a time, as to whether I would need a motion to support to the, and send a letter to the zoning board hearing, or not support. So, for A, consider 6 East First Avenue zoning board hearing application. I would need a motion to send a letter of support, or not. Anyone inclined to send a letter of support?
Yeah, I am. I'll make the.
I'll, no, I'll second.
Okay, so the motion, will make it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To the motion for considering E6, East First Avenue zoning hearing board application. The next item is consider 103 Spring Mill Avenue zoning hearing board application. Again, I would need either a motion to send a letter of support or not send a letter of support to the zoning boarding hearing.
Just for council's notification, I did receive contact from neighbors in the area concerned about the hours.
Okay. So, at this point, does, does anyone motioning to favor, or?
I am not inclined to motion to favor. I would rather the zoning hearing board look at the variances that have been granted over the last several months.
Okay, so what I will say is I need a motion to not support to the zoning board hearing for 103 Spring Mill Avenue.
Or do we remain neutral?
Mike, can we, can we remain neutral?
If you, if you send no letter, it will be you remaining neutral.
Okay, so I still need a motion of not support to the zoning hearing board.
No, yeah, of no.
Of no position.
No position.
I'll make the motion of no position to the zoning hearing board and allow the process to.
And that, that will allow the neighbors, if they choose to appear, to put forth their concerns.
I have to recuse myself. I have a business relationship with the.
Okay, so we.
Hey, I'll second it.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Your last item is to consider 128 Fayette Street zoning hearing board application. And again, I would need either a motion to send a letter of support or not support to the zoning hearing board.
I'll support that one. I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The last item on new businesses, consider adopting resolution, resolution 2018-18 Fair Housing Resolution. Chris?
The Borough of Concha Hocken is a recipient of federal funds, and as such, we are required to take affirmative action to further fair housing. There are a number of different things that there are, one or two things that we have to do, and then we have to do something, something else. The resolution that's before you is one of the things that we have to do. It describes what is discriminatory practices and what the protected classes are in fair housing. It indicates that to the, the extent of, of available resources the borough will assist anyone who feels they've been discriminated against in filing a, a complaint with the appropriate agency. We're required to publish this resolution to let people know that the borough supports fair housing and encourages fair housing. It does state, the resolution does state the actions that we're required to take, and people who have a disability or who have limited English proficiency can ask for special assistance in doing that.
Thank you, Chris.
This is something that we have to publish. We've done this in the past.
Right.
And we also have to post it at various places.
Right, so in this, in essence, this is a housekeeping item, and what we actually, I would need is a motion to adopt a resolution 2018-18 Fair Housing Resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. Busy night for you.
Busy month.
The next item on the agenda is consider approving a block party request for 200, the 200 block of East 8th Avenue. Our applicant is not here this evening. This is something that council has done in the past. I know that we all had our notes on it. I don't believe we've ever had any problems
No.
from it. So, if council is inclined to make a motion to approve the block party.
I would make that motion.
And that is?
I'll second.
Okay, and that is conditioned upon meeting all the requirements of the administration. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
What's the date of that?
September 8th.
September 8th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next item on the consent agenda is consider authorizing the tuition reimbursement for officers Gregory Hall and Detective Walter, Walters. That I would need a motion to authorize tuition reimbursement for officers Gregory, Gregory Hall and Detective Walter, as requested.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
That's in their contract, yeah, I'll make the motion.
And we have a second by Miss Portman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consider approving the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Premier Urgent Care. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the final remaining piece of this building that remains unleased. Premier Urgent Care, which as you know, is going to be leasing space in the building. It's currently leasing, after a First Amendment where they grabbed more space, 3,095 square feet. This adds an additional 2,282 square feet, for a total of 5,377 square feet. In terms of the rent to be paid, the base rent amounts are the same as the previous amounts they were paying. So, this closes out the building. It allows for a limited number of tenants in the building, which is helpful to all involved. I have reviewed the Second Amendment, and I find it acceptable and ready for council's approval if they so choose.
And just clarification, when you say base rent, it's base rent per square foot? Not, not the original base rent?
Exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're exactly right.
Okay, if council is inclined, I need a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Premier Urgent Care.
I would make that motion.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is discuss the site development agreement specifications for 51 Washington Street project. I will note for council that this is not something that we will need a motion on. It is for information only, and Mr. Peters will explain that to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This application came in some time ago. Some of you were on council. I came in in September 2013. At that time, there was a conditional use application filed for increased floor area ratio and increased building bulk. On January 15th, 2014, a predecessor borough council denied that application. They're thereafter followed a series of appeals, which were settled by stipulation and order dated October 17th, 2014. I included in the materials that I gave to you a copy of that settlement agreement. Although the settlement agreement provides that it is left to my office and the Borough Engineers Office to approve the plans as finally to be submitted, because council already approved them, more than just in concept. I mean, really, it was approved in terms of what the final land development would look like. It's important to both my office, to the Borough Engineers Office, and to administration that you understand what exactly was agreed to way back when. So, I put together a memorandum for you, which explains what the borough has already committed itself to. We have been working diligently over the last several months with the applicant. I note that applicant's counsel is here. We've worked very hard together to get to where we are today, and we are at a point where the development agreement and other agreements are quickly coming to a conclusion, so it is now time for you to understand exactly what's being approved. So, it is, bear with me one second. It is a 304-unit residential housing development located down on Washington Street. In addition to the housing development, the developer agreed in the settlement agreement to improve the SEPTA lot down there. So, there is, there's going to be a realigned, Washington Street slightly realigned to allow for the improvement of the parking lot. There will be 54 parking spaces in the improved parking lot. As part of the approval, developer is required to pay $1,165 per unit and an impact fee. The developer is also providing dedication of riverfront land for a public trail, public access down to the riverfront, and construction of an, of an observation area down on the riverfront, as well as money towards the borough's global traffic study, and also undertaking the construction of the SEPTA parking lot. The developer administration, SEPTA, and the RDA worked hard to get a grant for the construction of the SEPTA parking lot. So, we have a $400,000 multimodal transportation grant. $185,000 will be taken out of the borough's impact fees initially, so those impact fees amount to $354,000 and one, $354,160, 304 units times the $11.65 impact fee. The borough agreed in the settlement agreement to have the impact fees go towards construction of the SEPTA parking lot, subject to an agreement that was to be reached. That agreement is for $400,000 to come from the multimodal grant, for $185,000 to come as a credit from borough impact fees. That is for a cost up to $585,000. If the improvements exceed $585,000, SEPTA has committed $70,000. The borough has committed an, an additional $70,000 from the impact fees, and all additional fees will be paid by the developer. That leaves the borough with a new SEPTA parking lot, with the public trail, with the access easements, with the observation deck, and then a net of around $100,000 in impact fees. As part of that, the borough is actually swapping property with SEPTA, which has been an interesting experience working through their bureaucracy, but we're getting very close. And with that, that, that's all I wanted council to know, was, was what exactly was being done. I think it's important for the public to know that they're going to start seeing activity down there soon. And if you have any question for developer's counsel, he is here tonight. And again, we've worked very hard to get to where we are today.
What was the total number of parking spots for?
Oh, for, well, for the residential development, it is 367. And then for the SEPTA parking lot, it's 54 new spaces.
54 new additional spaces.
Yep.
And where do those people park during construction?
Great question. So, there is a whole temporary parking lot that's being created.
Down there?
Yeah, down there, yep.
Okay. So, it won't overflow into lower end of town?
It absolutely should not. That's the whole point. I mean, SEPTA was, as you can imagine, adamant about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for coming, Doug.
We made it easy for you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work. Sounds like a long road to get to where we are.
It's been four years.
Yes.
You're receptive, right?
No, we don't need to vote. That was just to update us.
Thank you for that summary, Mr. Peters. Well, that was pretty good. So, now we are to public comment. If you'd like to come up and state your name and address for us?
My name is Deborah Zlowski, and I live on 225 East 5th Avenue. First of all, I want to thank Concha Hocken Police, Officer Foster in particular. We have somebody stealing mail out of the mailboxes in the Concha Hocken Post Office from the outside. Now, I had a check taken, and it was like five days later, he found it. Somebody turned it in, and he brought it to my home. And luckily, I have, you know, Easy Guard on my checks. They couldn't change the amount. And it was from my, you know, secondary health insurance, the government, and that would have caused, you know, a major problem for me if they would have changed it. Now, I thought I was the only one. Then I found out Mr. Sweeney, Tonya Chivarelli's father, had one. He had a $695 check he put in at 4:30 in the morning. It was stolen out of the box, and they cashed it for $800 down the city. And his wife, who works at Santander Bank, of course, got the check, and she screamed and yelled at him, wanted to know why he wrote an $800 check when he only had $595 in his personal account. So, it came to be a problem. So, I notified Washington DC. I called their fraud division, and I notified them, and I told them about what happened. And one night, I was walking, and unfortunately, I didn't have my cellphone on. But I saw two men, young guys. They had a string, and I was watching them to see what they were going to do. And I didn't have a cellphone, and I said, well, maybe I'll catch the policeman riding by real quick, and I'll grab them. But when they saw me, they left. They took a string, and they had one of those sticky mousetrap things that you can buy, and they were trying to open the mailbox and use that. And then today, when I was getting my computer fixed up at Team Children, there was an FBI person up there who said, this has been something new that's been starting up in little towns lately where they're stealing mail out of mailboxes, especially ones that don't have cameras outside, and they don't have them here. Because I asked, I went inside and I asked, he said, no. So, I told them, and one of the fraud people, I said, look, you better put cameras out here, because if not, you know, I don't know how many checks people took, you know, were taken. So, you know, and I know some of mine have been late that I mailed, so I'm hoping, you know, I get them back, or they do go where they were supposed to go. So, this could turn into a big issue with, with the post office. And I know it's under federal, but that's why I made my phone call and did what I did. So, hopefully, they will put cameras in.
Thank you for alerting us of that.
But, but I do want to know that, you know, they did a great job, Officer Foster, and, you know, hunting me down and bringing me back the rest of the paperwork
Right.
and things, so. And I do have a $50 check for you, Chief. I'll have to drop it off tomorrow. I forgot to bring it tonight, okay? And you can buy the guys. Well, you can keep it if you want, it's up to you. But if you want to treat your mental launch, you may, or do whatever you want with it.
I'm aware of everything that he spoke about, and, and I'm proud to say that with no help from the FBI or Washington or postal inspector, Detective Wire identified the person today.
Oh, great.
So, a warrant will be foregone.
Oh, great, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you for your information.
I knew you would do a good job, Chief.
I did, Detective Wire.
Well, tell them I said thank you, please. But I will bring the money over tomorrow, and you guys can do whatever, okay?
Thank you very much. If you please come up to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Yeah, hi. Scott Mueller from 105 Spring Mill. So, I'm the neighbor that Karina mentioned earlier tonight. And I'll be the first to say we love El Limon. We eat there, we go to Tierra Caliente as well. We live, we, we moved out of the city. We lived in the city for 17 years, and we bought 105 Spring Mill about 18 months ago. And Ted's was there, and I think the day that we settled, Ted's put his place up for sale. So, we weren't sure what to expect. We knew another restaurant would go in there. We, we didn't think it would be a bar, based on everything we knew. When we found out it was El Limon, our, our major concern is the hours. We know El Limon does a busy, late-night post-bar business, and from talking to Chris, who's been very helpful to me as well, explaining all the zoning requirements, it's a non-conforming residential, been grandfathered in as a, as a business, and this new business should not be any more intense than what, than what Ted's was. And that's the one thing that we know for sure will be more intense than what Ted's is. I've worked with the neighbors around me. Unfortunately, not too many could come. We have a few. My wife and Marty, who lives, his son lives at 107, could attend tonight, but we do have neighborhood support to try to work through the hours issue and to have it something that's more acceptable from a neighborhood perspective. But anyway, I appreciate. But anyway, I appreciate the mayor and your support and, and not supporting that right off the bat. I think we have some things to work through. Me and the neighbors are going to attend the zoning board meeting and hopefully have a good outcome there, but I appreciate your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Please come up.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Joe?
Hi. Flash. Joe Freenow from Old Elm Street, 412. First wanted to say thank you to Ray and his team. The grant's got a lot of issues going on right now, and I understand that couldn't make the meeting, but it was a very productive meeting, and we thank you for your partnership and getting our residents back into their houses as soon as possible. So thank you again, and we appreciate that. One other thing that I just wanted to, to bring up, it's funny because I'm getting calls from neighbors and people that I didn't really know paid attention to, things like the school board. I'm not here to debate that, but I do want to let everybody know that we are getting some questions about representation of the school board and what's going on up there, even tonight. People are asking me about it, and they understand that they're representing us in different areas within the borough as well. So I just wanted to bring, bring up that little comment. Not going to say anything more about that, but people are paying attention to it. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we understand who's representing us, and put our best foot forward. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone else have public comment? Okay, we're going to do it. Mr. Mayor Arrington, if you don't mind, I'm going to start with the police chief tonight because, only because the last two meetings, I'm having a hard time remembering. So if I start with him, I won't forget him.
It works.
Chief Metz?
I'm pretty routine. We have a new reporting system. We're all trying to get a handle on. It's been a lot of work. I have some great people in the department that are administering it, that are really helping out. It's, it's evolving. It's, it's going to be a good thing when we all get a handle on it.
That's great. Anyone else have any questions for Chief Arrington? Mr. D'Tino?
No, I do not have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, I guess we had, we had a fire up on Maple.
Mm-hmm.
Which, and I was talking to the chief and assistant chief, and he would like us to put a, something on the website or something about, they need more fire, or fire personnel are short. I said, we try to help them, try to get the more people to volunteer.
Yes, we are, and we're, we're trying to work with the fire department to have more events, to get the fire department out there and make the public aware that firefighters, we are in great need of, and it is all volunteer fire companies. And I don't know that all the residents are aware of that. So we do need to get that message out. Thank you.
We're also accepting applications for junior firefighters. And that's a young man, 15 and older.
And/or women.
Yes, and/or women. Yes.
As the board of women sits here.
No.
Ms. Marley?
I just have a few quick things. One of the things that we're talking about volunteering, we had a citizen volunteer to donate some trees to us. So he's met with Ray, and I've talked to all of council. And now, Mr. Griffin suggested that we should talk to Chris also before we go ahead with the tree planting. So that would be something that we've been working on all week behind the scenes. But also, I had talked to council about, we want to start a protocol for recognizing citizens that are turning 100 years old. We've done it in the past. We had a request for it now, and we think it's a wonderful thing for us to do. And we have to have some parameters, like how long people have to live in town. And we're saying 51 years, because then it's at least half of their lifetime that they've lived in Conshohocken. And our most recent person that was asked for was for Bud McMahon, and he lived at 410 East 10th Avenue for 97 years. So we think he's very fitting.
Qualified.
Yes, he's qualified. And so his niece had contacted me, and I said I would talk to everyone, and everyone was in agreement, we're going to put that process in place. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sakalowski?
I just wanted to say that the front part of this meeting with our presentations, the 5K turkey trot, the suicide prevention, and then our recreation program, they're all in line with the objective in our comprehensive plan for the community facilities and the idea of that we recognize what our future facilities and service needs are for the borough, and we enable to proactively, our residents to proactively participate in events that support health well, and wellness of our community. So one of the things that this council was very specific that we wanted to do was tie in the work that's been done by our community for the comprehensive plan and to really tag the activities that we're doing on a daily, weekly, monthly basis back to the comprehensive plan. So I just want to say thank you to those community members that are contributing to bringing those activities, as well as our administrative staff.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
Yeah, the only thing I'm excited about is this video that we're making. I have seen several from going to the PSAB conferences, and they're a great way.
Great.
To showcase where you live and the importance of bringing people here, not only to visit, but to stay and to live. So I'm very much looking forward to this video.
Thank you. Mr. Stokely?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the fire that Saturday morning also. I don't know where that rumor came from, but I was there. I was there at 4:30. The fire already started. The firemen practically had it out. But I thought it was a great, I mean, it was six, seven fire companies there. Now, it was a Saturday. A lot of them weren't working. But Gladwin was there, White Marsh was there, Plymouth was there. And I mean, I thought they had it organized. That's why I want to speak tonight, to give them a compliment on how they handled that fire and how, you know, there was so many firemen there.
Right.
And, and I'd like to comment on one of our firemen that, and I'm not going to say his name, but he's had some issues, some health issues. And I couldn't believe he was down there at the fire with a fire hose in his hand.
Right.
And, I mean, do we need, are we going to be short firemen in the future? Yes. And the last budget meeting, we talked about that.
Right. Oh, and we weren't saying any, that there was any problem with response to the fire. We were just stating in general that we've had discussions with the fire departments, and it's come up that they need more volunteers.
Well, not at that fire. There was plenty of fire.
That's, that's at least great to know, yes.
And there was seniors, older seniors, seniors of the fire department that were there, and there was a lot of young firemen there.
That's great.
And I was impressed. I was impressed. And I have to say that, and I have permission to mention the gentleman's name. It was chaos there for a little while. One of the tenants, all the tenants were there, and one got flown with a head injury down to Temple for burns. But after the fire was contained, I left. But one, when I came back, one of the residents in the, that owned, their mother owned the house was missing. Okay?
Yeah.
So I remember Donnie Wallace saying to me, he was right behind the building, saying to me, I think I'm going to let the gentleman stay because his family's not here right now, stay in my home for a couple hours. So everybody was looking for him, and then I remembered. Donnie Wallace said he would take him into his house. So Donnie Wallace not only took him into his house and his dog and kept him there until his family came, he also lent him his clothes. He took clothes, and he gave them to the, to the residents, because one gentleman was in his underwear.
Because it was in the middle of the night.
So I thought that that was a great thing, that somebody, and we have to recognize people like this more, that do these kind of things.
Right.
That, that, they're just, it was a kind thing to do. He didn't have to bring them in. He brought the, the dog in too, into his home. And I thought it was a great thing. And I thought they contained it very well, and I thought they did a terrific job down there.
That's great. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Mayor Arrington?
So we have a, a very busy September 15th. So I wanted to invite council and the public to a few really great events that we're planning. The first one, just, we, we had the recent trail upgrades from the county. So Chief Metz and I had been talking about a, a safety day, a way to bring in our biking community and our running community. And this just felt like a really good way to sort of catch everything at once. So on September 15th at 10:00 AM, we're going to do a bike trail safety class.